I now call the order, the business of May 26, 2015. Madam Deputy, will you please take the roll call?
Okay.
Nada Pagan.
Present.
Kenneth Baron.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Mister Chairman, you have a quorum?
Thank you. I'd like to ask our Chairman of the Watershead-Stewarts Commission, Steve Roberts, to please lead us in the pledge today. Steve?
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is approval of the agenda.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the, excuse me, order of business for May 26, 2015, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
With the addition of...
Addition, oh, I thought...
Were we adding that today, or...
Did you want to add that today?
I'd like to get started. I thought you were going to add it.
Was I adding it today, or...
Eight A.
Revenue ruling.
Which would be...
The letter ruling.
The letter from the chief.
What do you want to call it?
I told, I told, I thought we were going up. I saw we were going to add it.
Then, we'll make it I then, yeah?
Add the letter rolling, please.
Nine I.
Nine I.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry.
What do we got?
That will be nine...
Aye.
Aye.
Chief Brogan. Lisa, you already made that addition, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number four, approval of the minutes.
Mister Chairman.
Four A, the minutes, the regular meeting of May 12, 2015.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Pagan.
Mister Chairman, I move to approve of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 12, 2015.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mister Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve fund transfer six A and current claims six one through six twenty-eight.
Second.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Oh, yeah, I did. I'm sorry. I was just writing down. I have a question pertaining to the festival insurance. I was just wondering why the festival insurance, Candace, for a year, when the festival goes on for about a week, but the policy is from year to year. Is there some savings in doing it that way? Is that the reason?
No, there's really no savings. That's just how they issue. The policy is always for at least a minimum of one year.
I see.
So whether you got it for six days or a year, it's the same price.
It's their requirement.
That is correct.
Anything else?
Yeah, here's another question I had. I never noticed it before. When we have people, that company, Land, that does our sidewalks in the city...
A-Lin?
Yeah, E-N.
Oh, E&amp;N, so that's, okay. They do streets.
When we actually make residents repair sidewalks and make them pay for that, but if we should do it, do we get any reimbursement for approaches and things?
Well, if we have to...
I was reading that...
If we have to dig up a water main and dig up the sidewalk and dig up the driveway, we do that. That's all under the water budget.
Yeah, if it's like that, but if we're just tearing up somebody's approach, like some approaches are bad, sidewalks are bad, and we do the work, we don't bill them back, we don't backcharge them?
Yeah, yes, we do.
That's our sidewalk program.
But we have not had a sidewalk program for three or four years.
When we had the sidewalk program, they'd go out and mark the bad ones, and then if you didn't get a contractor, you would use our contractor, and then the person would pay for that.
Seeing all the money, and I'm saying, are we getting any of this back again, or what? That's my only question. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number seven, considerations of bid, seven A, from Recreation Director Greibel, the Richard A. Young Recreation Storage Building Expansion Project Bid Recommendation.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve and award the bid for the R.A. Recreation Center Storage Expansion Project to Algen Builders Incorporated, and the total bid is forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Funds to be paid for this project have been allocated from our 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015 Wayne County Park Milled Lotment, as outlined in seven A.
Second.
Second by...
Return to...
Return, of course.
Five percent bid bond.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, if you remember, I volunteered to stick my nose in this project to save money. When I'm reading Ken's thing, make no mention of the fact I had meetings with the architect, I made suggestions what to change, to get rid of the masonry work, the steel work.
We'll put your name on the door.
There you go.
Put your name on the door.
On the big door.
Jeez!
It's the comments by the city council. What, are you kidding me?
Mister Chairman, just, I know it's as outlined, but I just want for public information to know, expected completion date is June 30 of 2015.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number eight, reports from the Mayor, eight A, from Mayor Pletko, Saint Mel's Catholic Church, Corpus Christi procession. Mister Chair.
Is this a received note and file?
No, we've got to approve it. Councilman Constant?
I move we concur with Mayor Pletko and approve the Corpus Christi procession in conjunction with Saint Mel's and Saint Linus and Saint Sabina Church and Our Lady of Grace on June 7, 2015, at approximately 11:15 a.m., as outlined in eight A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Just wanted to note and let the public know, in particular Gulfview Manor residents, we're getting the word out just to let them know that this will be happening, and it is routed through the subdivision, just for their awareness.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Aide number nine, reports from City official, nine A, from Deputy Clerk Schaefer, budget amendments.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Pagan.
I move to approve the following budget amendments by the Clerk's Department, increases in election revenue, five thousand, increases in election contract services, two thousand five hundred, increases in election mileage, two hundred, increases in clerk contractual services, two thousand three hundred, and adjust these end balances to be as illustrated in nine A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Nine B, from Public Services Administrator Zimmer, fund transfers.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to approve the fund transfers as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Nine C, from Fire Chief Brogan, fund transfers.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the council concur with the request to transfer funds from the training account to our tuition account. The amount of the transfer is three thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Pagan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Nine D, from Library Director McCaffrey, appointment to library advisory board members, and there is a concurrence by the Mayor, because these are mayoral appointments.
Mister Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move we concur with Building Director, I'm sorry, Library Director Mike McCaffrey...
New job, Mike.
And renew the appointment of Emmy Peck and John Zadikian as library advisors on the library advisory board, effective February of 2015, and thank them for their past service, as outlined in nine D.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Reappointment is through February 2017.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Nine E, from Controller McCary, budget amendment.
Mister Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the budget amendment for the water fund, as outlined in nine E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number F, from Community Economic Development Director Ayman, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, return of program income to Mishta.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes, I move to approve Director of CEDD, Ronald Ayman's request to approve the attached check request in the amount of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars eighty-five cents from the NSP account to Neighborhood Stabilization Program income to be returned to Mishta, as outlined in nine, and I can't read the F, I think.
F, second.
Second by Councilwoman Pagan. Is there any discussion?
Mister Chairman.
March first.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Okay, I have a question for Director Ron. We got the letter from the Housing Development on the 31st of March, and they asked to be responded to in thirty days. What's happened? Why are we just doing this now in May?
Well...
I know it's not a long period, but it's still over the mark.
They started out telling us we owed them three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
Obviously, that was incorrect, and it took us this long.
To resolve it.
To resolve it, yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Councilman Kozinski.
Was this issue identified in most recent Platten Moran audit?
Yes.
It was. Okay. I was curious about that, because we probably wouldn't have to wait for the state to ask us for their money. We might have responded on the basis of what Platten Moran had recommended. I think we've all heard and read the details of the report.
But there wasn't a specific amount, I don't think.
Exactly. The audit didn't specify, it just indicated that some of the money may have to be refunded, and then Director Ayman had to get negotiations with Mishta on an amount, but that brought it down by almost two-hundred-and-fifty, if not three-hundred-thousand, was significant.
I want to follow up to...
Go ahead, Joe.
Is this a single transaction refund, or is it multiple?
Single transaction refund.
How many houses were involved in the requirement of refunding this amount? Or is it a single structure, a single transaction?
Seventeen houses were acquired by the city.
Was the entire package?
Yes.
So we will not have to give any more back?
No.
We're done with them.
Councilman Berry.
So, will you say we're done with that? NSP program no longer exists at the state level?
It does, but not for...
Not for the city of Dearborn Heights?
Dearborn Heights.
Is it because...
We still are holding a couple of pieces of property that have to be sold, that have not been sold yet. Once they do get sold, that money has to go back to Mishta also.
Because we initially...
Minus whatever maintenance fees we incur.
We initially started this program thinking that this was a revolving fund that would go back into other investments to help the community, but that seems now to have gone away by choice of the administration, choice of the council, or just overall decision that this wasn't working.
Well, actually, they changed the rules about halfway through. When I say "they," I'm talking about Mishta. We are a sub-recipient of these HUD funds from Mishta, the city of Dearborn Heights is. So it's HUD grant money that's granted to the state, and then the state doles it out.
Okay, so based on that, based on, I guess, the rules that have changed, it doesn't suit us?
It doesn't.
Continue on the program?
I, no, it doesn't. That NSP one program actually expired. It's been renewed by NSP two and then NSP three, basically the same operation, they're just, it's newer grant money.
Yeah.
And we would be eligible to go after that grant money if Council deems so.
Well, I know you picked this up somewhere in the middle of NSP one, if I wasn't mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, and carried it to this point, and for the seventeen homes that we did move one way or the other and remodel and sold, I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other question? Thanks, Ron. Nothing further? All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number G, from Community Economic Development Director Ayman, request for information by Councilman Joseph Kozinski.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The four contractors that are involved in serving the Community and Economic Development Department with services as needed are essentially doing work at the present time, but as I see it, there are two contractors, Stargate, that doesn't have a signature of authority or a signature to whom we can correspond with. So I'm going to move to send the Stargate contract and the environmental testing company back. The environmental testing company virtually has no information, no company information, no signature, no federal tax ID, there's no information whatsoever, and I would request that both of those companies be contacted by Mr. Ayman to fill in all of the details completely, so that we don't have any additional questions with regard to the contractors that are doing work for us. That is, the motion would be to send back the Stargate contract and the environmental testing contract to Mr. Ayman, to Director Ayman, to get both of those contracts completely drawn, including a signature of authorization of the person who's authorized to sign these contracts, and return them to the next regular meeting, so that when these two come back, we'll be in a position to send them on to the appropriate destination for the Mayor signature and the Clerk signature. I know the Mayor has already signed these, but in view that that's information, it's absent, I would like to have them updated and returned in the first meeting of June. I don't put all that in the motion. The motion is to return Stargate and environmental contracts and request Mr. Ayman to contact these companies to bring them up to date with complete information.
Okay, is that doable?
Is...
Thank you.
I don't quite understand. I thought we'd receive note and file this, and if the instruction is to have Mr. Ayman have these contracts completed or signed, but are we making another, are we amending the motion?
No.
No.
The intention of the motion 150, that's in the present minutes, was to have all these contracts updated and signed and ready for delivery to their appropriate destination, but there might have been some misunderstanding as to what was requested.
Okay.
I say that because in the instance of a Mayor signing and dating the contracts, that was done, but the other information still fell short of a complete and acceptable contract with all the elements of a contract ordinarily.
And I understand it, and I agree with you. I guess I'm just trying to understand, and it's probably, it's not a big deal really to make a motion to go ahead and instruct him to have these signed in accordance to what the agreement called for to begin with, but you make a motion to do that?
Oh, he just did.
Okay, then...
The administration has no problem with the request, although Ron isn't one of these two contractors. You indicated to me he's ill, and so is he going to continue, or what we may have to do is go out for bids again on one of these contractors. You ought to, I think, let the council know that there is a difficulty with the one, because the gentleman is ill.
Which one is it?
After, Stargate. After we, Stargate has submitted the low bid, he actually had a heart attack. It's just a one-man operation. He has since had quadruple bypass. He's slowly recovering from the surgery, and the last time we talked to him on Thursday, he said he was feeling better, and he was hoping he'd be back up on his feet and back to work within the next month or so. In the meantime, we've been going out for quotes. This is, any one of these services that he provides is sixty dollars. So we go out, we put it out for bid, and really, we don't have to, the limit is fifteen hundred. If an invoice is over fifteen hundred, then that contract has to go out for bid, but his services are sixty dollars.
So we're going to try to comply with it.
Hopefully, he's going to be back up on his feet, and he'll, you know, sign the contract that he was offered.
But let's try to get the environmental testing one done, and if there is a problem with the health of, I don't know the guy's name, at Stargate, then we'll submit that to the council and keep you for the next meeting.
Sure.
Support.
Okay. Support by Councilman Berry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number eight, from Council Chair Baron, 2015 rate schedule for Wade Trims Incorporated.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Pagan.
I move to approve of the new rate schedule for Wade and Trim beginning in the fiscal year 2015 through 2016 for engineering services as outlined in their letter indicated in item nine H.
Support.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Nine I, request to implore Mr. Joe Rankin of Platten Moran to obtain a letter ruling from the IRS that costs not to exceed thirty-four thousand dollars, and we will say that the letter that was dated May 5, 2015, will be nine I.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Berry.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Horvath. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number thirteen, new business, thirteen A, business license renewal for Denny Ginmill, four nine oh one South Telegraph, Carl Eastit Post, number two thirty-two, two-three-eight-five-zero Military, Applebee's Restaurant, Mid-Atlantic, two-six-five-eight-two Ford Road, Pucks Bar, two-five-nine-five-zero Ford Road.
So move.
Mister Chairman.
So moved by Councilman Pagan.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thirteen B, a big one.
Aide number thirteen B, adoption of the 2015-16 corporate fund balance.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I just want to make sure you heard me. You're calling that side of the table.
You got a bad ear over here.
Yeah, I guess. I move that the city council adopts a general government fiscal 2015-16 surplus budget in the amount of forty-two million seven hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Next, Joe.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the city council adopt the library fund fiscal 2015-2016 surplus budget in the amount of two million one hundred fifty-seven thousand twenty-six dollars.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Mister Chair.
Aide number three, Councilman Berry.
Move that the tax levy for the 2015-2016 fiscal year be set at eight-point-five mils.
Support.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number four.
Mister Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that six-point-one mils be levied to finance the voter-approved Act 345 Fire and Police Pension Plan for fiscal year 2015-2016 in the amount of six million six hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pagan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number five.
That the city council levy an additional two-point-two-three-one-six mils on the taxable valuation for financing garbage and rubbish disposal for fiscal year 2015-16.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Oh, you're right, that's the first one.
Well, I didn't sound off, so I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. A silent vote is a vote for the affirmative, so you are still all right.
That's true.
Smart.
Okay. Aide number six.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move that the city council levy an additional two-point-zero mils on the taxable valuation of public safety, as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights, for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number seven.
Mister Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve, the millage approve for solid waste disposal by the electorate in May 2000 be levied at one-point-zero mils.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number eight.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move that the city council approve the 2015-2016 lump sum budget for the 20th District Court in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Salaries not to exceed amount specified in the budget.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Aide number nine.
Mister Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Barry.
I motion that the City Council levy an additional .9188 mil to fund the City Department for Libraries, including new improvements of the library buildings as approved by the voters for the City of Dearborn Heights. Support.
Second by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 10.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the City Council levy an additional .95 of a mil to fund the city libraries as approved by the voters of the City of Dearborn Heights.
Second.
Second by Councilman Epigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Vince, how much lower is the millage now, total millage, that the public will...
Act 345 dropped by about a mil.
One mil?
From last year. Then the CSO bond that we have, 1.25, fell off this year, so 2.25 mils.
So, it's...
2.25?
2.25 mils less you will be paying this year than last year for those reasons.
That's combined, correct?
And that's only for the city, but that represents probably at least 15 percent, I would think.
15 percent is what you said before.
Yeah, so it's a decrease in taxes.
Thank you. Nice.
Well done. Okay. Item number C, Adoption of the Administration Fee.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Resolution for the City of Dearborn Heights regarding administrative fee, whereas the City of Dearborn Heights is authorized to collect up to 1 percent administration fee pursuant to Michigan Compiles Law 211.44, provided the governing body of the city by resolution approves the authorization of the fee. Whereas the City Council of the City of Dearborn Heights believes that it is necessary to collect said administration fee for fiscal year 2015-16, said collection rate need only be set at 1.0 percent. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Dearborn Heights approves the imposition of, and the treasurer of the City of Dearborn Heights shall administer the imposition of a property tax administration fee pursuant to Michigan Compiles Law 21144 with respect to taxes to be collected for the summer 2015 and winter 2015, only, only, with the speculation that the imposition of any further property tax administration fee will require a new resolution before it may be imposed, and that the fee shall be used to offset costs incurred by the City of Dearborn Heights in assessing property values, collecting the property tax levies, and in the review and appeal process.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's all that we have for this part of the agenda. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. On behalf of the Salvation Army, the Salvation Army Dearborn Heights Citadel would like to invite everyone to attend a free Salvation Army Band Concert, which features the world-famous Household Troops Band from London, England. The concert is Monday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. Location is Salvation Army Dearborn Heights Citadel. That address is 26700 West Warren. Again, everyone is invited to attend on Monday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Anything else from any council?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Jack McIntyre here.
Mm-hmm.
Jack, I've been authorized to compliment your department on making the city beautiful even more appealing. The officers in your department are doing an exceptional job in keeping up with cutting grass, even to the point of eliminating some areas that were nesting places for those little things we call mice and rats. So, when you get back to work tomorrow, shake their hand and commend them for a job well done. It's most appreciated by all of the citizens, including those who like to figure their lawn to a point of being extremely attractive. The, one of the, one of the things that has come back to me from one particular resident is that sometime there are attempts to call out a lot of household names in the City of Dearborn Heights, including people in the FBI, and CIA, and the mayor's office. I ask the citizens not to be intimidated by that. The important part is that there's an ordinance in place for tall grass and tall weeds, and it will be enforced, as has been demonstrated to me and many others in the last three to four weeks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the councils?
Yeah, we need to include wild bushes as well.
Mayor, do you have anything that...
The one thing I wanted to express is I want to thank St. Hedwick Cemetery and the Franciscan Fathers for their memorial service. Some of us attended, and as I indicated, I was last week at a meeting with other mayors, and people were debating how many more clowns they had in their parade, and the number of people, and one of them, one of the mayors sat there and said, "Mayor, Dan, you haven't said anything." And I said, "Well, we do a very solemn ceremony remembering our fallen men and women that served," and I expressed that I think it's unique to the community. It's not a parade, but I think we treat that with a great degree of reverence, and I'm so glad that St. Hedwick Cemetery and the Franciscan Fathers have kept that tradition going. And I just am always moved when I go to that event, as I was yesterday. Also, a gentleman who lives in the city, Colonel Fock, speaks at many of the veterans groups, and I'm, as I said yesterday, I'm proud to be his mayor. He just does a great job. So, that's what I would like to, wanted to express.
Good. Anything else from the table? At this time, if anyone has any announcements, things happening in the city, please come up to the mic and let us know.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to mention a couple of events. This Wednesday, May 27th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Caroline Candy Library, relax and let your cares drift away as you join Leslie Siranisi of Advanced Energy Therapy as she demonstrates Reiki and Jamie Garrison as she takes away everyone on a journey of meditation. For reminder, please call 313-791-3800. Also, next weekend, June 4th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, June 5th and 6th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, at Caroline Candy Library, we will be having our annual summer book sale. The bag sale will be on Saturdays. The Friends have got a good deal in storage waiting for you to discover, so come on out. That's all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thanks, Mike.
Council Chair and Mayor, good evening. I just wanted to, this will be the last opportunity I get to remind folks that on June 6th, we're hosting a event with the Michigan Aid Society. It's the 2015 Protective Pet Low-Cost Pet Clinic. We'll have full vaccinations for both cat and dogs that are $5. Microchips you can get for $10. Rabies vaccinations also for $5. We're also going to have folks from the Clerk's Office, so if you're a Dearborn Heights resident, this is open to anyone. So, if you're watching or listening, and you've got family members that could benefit from this, it doesn't matter where they live, they can come here. We're hosting it for them. The Clerk's Office will also be here to issue licenses for our dogs and cats that are Dearborn Heights residents. We're still looking for a couple volunteers to help that day. It's going to be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The first 500 animals or cats that are in line will be serviced that day. Cats are, it's suggested that cats come in carriers. Small dogs that don't do well with larger dogs would be better inside a carrier. All animals have to be on a leash, and they have to be in control of the owner. If you don't think your dog can tolerate being in line with that many animals, you can have someone wait with them by the car, in the car, and have somebody else stand in line. So, we're going to have, we're guessing that Michigan Aid Society said people start lining up around 8:15 for the 9 o'clock start time. Why I mention that, oh, and it's cash-only that day. Two ways that you can get information, and it kind of came up tonight. We just went and picked up a dog in Military Hills that had no tag, no collar, and you could tell he was in some kind of distress. He didn't want to move. He was very stubborn about moving. We had to physically pick him up and put him in the truck, but it looked like there might have been something, you know, like he was having, he was in some kind of medical distress of some kind. So, fortunately, we called the Aid Society. They have a doctor that is on call that will meet us there. But again, it's just so important that everyone has tags. Today, we rescued a dog here in Dearborn Heights that actually came from Seven Mile and Fielding.
Wow.
He made his way to the City of Dearborn Heights, and we're, because he had tags from the City of Detroit and a phone number, we were able to call them, and the owner was able to come here and get the dog, so. But two ways that you, besides calling directly, if you are on Facebook and you go to the City of Dearborn Heights Ordinance and Animal Control and like us on Facebook, we post all missing dogs or missing animals on there. And also, for those that you don't know on Facebook, there's also For the Love of Louie, which is something that we go to every single day, and it's a really helpful site on Facebook that's also helpful for that. And then, before Councilman Kozinski mentioned what he did, and I appreciate that, I was going to take a minute, if I could, just to brag. May 4th, we started the grass program. During the last three weeks, we've had one full-timer that's been on vacation for one full week, and a part-timer that's been off for four days. But we issued under grass debris and weeds, we've issued 690 grass violations. We've had 117 trash can or trash enforcements that we've responded to, 34 boat, camper, and motorhome issues, 37 no permits, 113 no CFOs, 11 fence calls. We've taken a whole series of pictures for six potential houses that we would like to put on the demo list. We responded to 137 Blake calls, 121 animal calls, and 52 abandoned vehicles. Between my line and Michelle's, we're averaging about 125 to 130 phone calls a day. Now, for those potential investors in Dearborn Heights, don't think we live in a city that has a lot of, a huge number of violations. We get a lot of people that call for the same thing. So, it's kind of weeding through that process. We may get five or six people that call about the same possum that's at the corner of Fenton and whatever street, so. And so, while I'm talking about that, I just want to give a quick shout-out to Sarah Wojnowski from the HR Department and Stephanie Shaki, the Mayor's Secretary. Several days last week and again this week, they've come to the ordinance department, and they've helped us get caught up on our phone messages. We've had three days in a row where we had over 300 messages that we had to respond to, so thank you to them for doing that for us. And then, I didn't want to, I also wanted to mention, since May 4th, we've also issued 43 civil infraction tickets, so that's it.
Nice job.
Good job, Jack. Yep. Thanks. Any more announcements? Steve?
Steve Robert, excuse me. Steve Roberts of the Watershed Committee. May 30th is the Rouge Rescue. It'd be held at Parkland Park. Hainup is at 8:30, and it runs to 12:00. And we're having a garlic pole mustard event, because that is getting really bad.
Yeah, it is.
It can be done on both Ecorse Creek and Rouge Rescue.
Yeah.
And if anybody gets upset about their water being, their street being flooded, people, if you get out and just sweep your street in front of your, in front of your house, it wouldn't happen.
Very well. Pretty good.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for all you do.
That's an easy one, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else have any more announcements? Then at this time, if anyone wishes to bring anything before us, please give your name, street, and the city that you live in. If you want to direct your questions to me, we'll pose that. You will have three minutes from the time after you do that. When you have 15 seconds left, Councilman Barry will hold that sign up, so please conclude it, and he will hold up the stop sign when your three minutes are up. So, anyone who wants to bring us, come up to the microphone, sir.
My name is Ed Farlick. I live on Robin Dale Street. I'm the first house, next leader of printing company. I went to the ordinance department here about three weeks ago, I mean, five weeks ago, okay? And I waited for like three weeks because they said they'll take care of it. Don Zimmer is in charge of the road construction, what do you call it, thing or not?
Bill Zimmer. Bill Zimmer. Huh? Bill Zimmer. Bill Zimmer, okay. Well, he's done a, his workers done a poor job, because I called down on the potholes
in front of my house last year. They patched some of the potholes, and some of the potholes they did not, okay? Now, this year, it's got worse there, okay? And you've got water puddles and everything else. I pay taxes, okay? And I, now, I reported that to the DPW, and I've been waiting two weeks already now, and it still hasn't been done, okay? That's the number-one issue. Number two, the person that cuts the grass on the empty parking lot on Warren Avenue, there's an empty lot there next to the doctors, next to the printing company, okay?
Between leader and doctors.
Yeah, right, right. He cuts the lot. He cuts the grass on the side by the fence. He don't weed whack that, okay? He leaves that like a, you know, high brush. That ain't my job to weed whack that, okay? That's his job. That's business-related. It's his job, okay? And number three, there's a house being built in back of my house. Now, who, I have never seen, this is a monster home. I thought I'm being, gonna build a chapel over there, okay? Now, I thought there was an ordinance there, and it's so, you know, certain height or whatever, okay? Is there no restriction on the height and everything? I think this is a monster, big, don't even fit in the neighborhood, you know, in the block, okay? And they did the grading, okay? My fence is completely down. I asked, I asked him, are you gonna, one end of my fence is the way it's supposed to be, the other fence is all dropped. I says, "Are you going to grade the rest of this?" He tells me, "We're going to do this later sometime." I thought when you grade, because I built my house, okay? When you grade, you're supposed to grade level, okay? And I have never heard that, okay? That, you know, we'll get to that less. I want this stuff taken care of, okay? And second thing, the fence, I complained about the fence there, okay? They put a fence there before, in that, when I complained in that. I talked to Mr. Kozinski, and they put a fence. But they keep the fence part down. Some kids is going to get hurt there, okay, going into the house, okay? And, or I might find a dead, you might find a dead body. You're going to hear somebody, you found a dead person in that house. And if somebody gets hurt, I'm going to tell them, "Get a lawyer and sue the heck out of the city, because you were told, and you just don't do nothing about it," okay? That's all I have to say.
That's the fence around the house you're talking about.
Right, right. On the alley part, okay?
The temporary one.
The temporary one. They keep it down, okay? They, certain parts, they got it, and the other parts, they leave it open, okay? Somebody kid's going to get in there, and somebody's going, you know, going to find a dead body sometimes.
Jack, I think that, is that your department makes sure that's secured?
Yeah.
Okay, and it looks like you're writing, so, and I'm sure Mohammed, that the heights, there was no restrict, it's within the ordinance, okay?
What about the grading that he's talking about? Is it possible to take a look at how it's graded and how it's affected his fence?
We have to issue all the new constructions, because you have one...
There's one.
Yeah, on the gradings, I think it's a similar, we, you know, repeated the issues out there. When there is a construction, there is going to be spots in the yard that's a little bit higher than the others, but at the end, they have to level it to a certain grade, which is already ahead of time, that's known, so it would be done after the construction is completed.
So, that's normal to be done after construction?
Yes, before a CFO has done that.
And will we, will it get graded back down to the level that...
We, initially, on those new constructions, we get a great shot to begin with, and that's what they will have to meet after the completion.[1770.33] what they will have to meet after the completion.
And on the, and the potholes, that's going to be addressed, right?
And, Bill, you got the potholes list? Okay, he's got that.
And I have one more question. There's, when we were building that house there, they asked me if they could go, because I'm in the, there's easement part, okay? I tried to tell them, there's a sewer on the outside of the fence, okay, to connect to that sewer that. And he's telling me, "Oh, no, no, there's a, it's further down because there's a sewer this way and that." And sure enough, what I said was right, okay? They connected in that. Well, anyway, I had the easement part all fixed up with flowers and stones and everything. That's all a mess, okay? And I hold them responsible when I want to get reimbursed for that, okay? Or, or, you know, and that, because that's not right, what they did, okay? I mean, I, they have the access to the, to the easement part, but not to, you know, go further than what they're supposed to. And they messed up my stuff, and I wanted, I want to reimburse from them, but not, I'm going to get a lawyer and let's sue whatever, okay?
I'm sure we can take care of it.